I'd like to call the meeting to an end. Roll call of Alderman.
Alderman Hazel. Alderman Consilla.
Here.
Alderman Husa. Here. Alderman Vidner. Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Dittelman.
Here.
Alderman Gah.
Here.
Alderman Steele.
Here.
Alderman Wygant.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wigginton.
Here.
Alderman Bartfield.
Alderman Hazel called this afternoon. He had his knee surgery the other day and he requested to be off tonight, give him a little bit more healing time. And Alderman Vidner called the other day and said he would be not in Melville today. So those two were excused, they both called. This time I'd like to have roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City Attorney Horner. Police Chief Bill Clay. Fire Chief Tom Hoore.
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitre.
Here.
City Engineer Tim Gregowitz.
Here.
Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Police Resource Director Sherri Farrow.
Here.
Director of Parks and Recreation Debbie Velba.
Here.
Health and Housing Director Bob Sabo.
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole.
Here.
Director of Wastewater Royce Cartwright.
Here.
Director of Economic Development Anissa McCaskill.
Here.
And Director of Library Leander Spearman.
Here. Okay, Assistant Chiefs, partners here for Chief Clay. Who was the other one we had? And you're here for Garrett. Garrett's coming late. He'll be here in a few minutes. Very good. Thank you Brian Flynn for filling in for this part of the meeting. At this time ladies and gentlemen, if you would stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America for its standing as one nation under God and in the principle of liberty, justice, and moral law.
Alrighty, first of all, I want to go ahead and tell you that this is our last meeting at Lindenwood. We're going to officially thank them when we have the rededication. But I guess it's been what, Alderman, you were here the whole time, but I think it's like almost 14 months we've been here? Well, 14 months, it's been kind of a while. It's over a year. Yeah, too long, I don't disagree, but we're in the home stretch now. So just so everybody's reminder, October 2nd meeting will be at City Hall in the council chambers. And committee meeting that night for Master Sewer will be in the council chambers, right Royce?
Yes.
Because we're just trying to give Kenny and his staff a little bit more time to finish the upstairs, get all the stuff moving, because we're going to start moving that day on the 2nd. So we'll probably have that part of the building off limits yet, kind of closed off with some tape or something, because they're just going to start the moving on Monday. And then City Hall will be open with all business open there. When I say all business, the mayor, finance, sharing with marketing and websites, then downstairs Jenny with the clerk and Dean with the treasurer. Those departments will all be open for business at City Hall on Monday, October 9th. And just a reminder, Anissa and Economic Development is staying at 407th for now, East Washington. Housing will remain there and engineering at this time. It's my hope and my goal that in the not-too-distant future, and I'm talking about a year or so, not days, that we'll get the money figured out and we will get the rest of the police station remodeled and bring them over there. And then we will hopefully, the council will approve the recommendation to sell that facility so we don't have so much additional upkeep on buildings. So that's the plan and we're moving in the right direction. Once again, I might as well stay at the front here. The 21st of October, that Saturday, 10 o'clock, will be the rededication ceremony and the open house of the building for family, friends, neighbors, whoever wants to come. Okay, with that all talked about, there's no public hearing this evening. I do not have any public participation. If anybody would like to speak in just a moment, raise your hand, come up to the microphone, give your name, keep your comments to about two to three minutes. Preferably something that's going on. Preferably... Are we okay?
Okay.
Okay. I feel like a school teacher. Okay, so public participation is now open. Yes, sir, in the back of the room.
(inaudible)
Well, let me just go ahead and answer this, Stuart, because I don't normally do this, but this has been a grant that we've had as many years as you've been coming. We do this every year, we have to get this council approval. But it's a joint grant coming from the federal government that supports law enforcement. And this is the way it's been set up before I was mayor, so it's nothing new and you've been here for these votes before. Okay?
(inaudible) five centennial park, they should have their head examined and be fired. That all, you don't forget, all they put a briskie golf course in the middle of a thick hilly woods. All you're going to do is have people slipping and sliding in the mud, besides tearing up a lot of nice wooded area, it's just a total mess. And a big complaint is people are running stop signs, the 29th and God, somebody from the police department, they do that all over Melville. And up at Union School, in order to keep these stupid parents or whatever from parking, dropping their kids off right in front of the school, which you're not supposed to do, there are signs saying no parking, don't drop your kids off, and whatnot, they have to have one of their employees out there in the morning telling these parents, no, you can't drop your kids off there, you gotta go somewhere else to drop them off. So they gotta have an employee out there in the morning. And I think that's a bad example for the kids, that their parents are low-level lawbreakers. And it's the same with running stop signs, I guess they consider themselves low-level lawbreakers. And a friend of mine said the same thing about parents think they're better than the law, above the law, that they do this at all the schools in Melville, not just Union School, that they think they can pull up right up from the school and let their kids out even though there's signs saying no parking.
Okay. Got it?
Yeah, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Stuart. Anyone else this evening? Well, hearing and seeing no hands, I'm going to close. Public participation, we're going to move on. We have no presentations or recommendations this evening, so we're going to move to the meeting. Approval of the minutes, we have the city council minutes from September 5th. What's your pleasure? Motion by Alderman Wigginton, second by Alderman Bartfield. Is there any additional corrections to the minutes? Hearing done, all in favor of receiving and finally the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Claims, payroll, and disbursements. Do I hear a motion to approve the claims and disbursements in the amount of $3,46,941.51 and the payroll of $840,212.54?
Aye.
Motion by Alderman Anthony, second by Alderman Ovian. Discussions about the claims or payroll, disbursements? Roll call.
Consilla.
Aye.
Husa.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Bartfield.
It passed, I'm sorry, that was painful.
Thank you.
No, it was not to listen to, I just got to hear what you were saying, like you were struggling. Okay, we move on to all reports. Finance Committee, Alderman Consilla.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of three refurbished trash trucks for $148,050 from Elliott Equipment Company.
We have a motion by Consilla, second by Husa. Any discussions on this? Roll call.
Consilla.
Aye.
Husa.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Bartfield.
Motion carries, Alderman Consilla.
Make a motion to approve using Gilmore and Bell as rebate analysts for Frank Scott Parkway Bond's arbitrage, rebate calculations, and filings at a cost of $4,500.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Steele. Do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Consilla.
Aye.
Husa.
Aye.
Randall.
I have to abstain.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Bartfield.
Motion carries, Alderman Consilla.
Make a motion to approve the extension of the 22.5% home rule sales tax with no sunset date.
We have a motion by Alderman Consilla, do I hear a second by Alderman Schaefer? Do I hear discussion? Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. With respect to Section 2 of the proposed ordinance, I'd like to make the following motion. My motion is to extend this quarter percent home rule sales tax for four years to sunset December 31st, 2021, with a scheduled review to take place in August of 2021, to consider terminating or extending such tax for a defined period of time.
So you're amending the motion?
Correct.
So we have a motion, now we have an amendment. Is there a second to the amendment? You second it in?
Yes.
We have a motion by Alderman Randall, second by Alderman Dittelman, to put a sunset back on this for and four years.
Correct.
Okay, discussion.
Recent need of opening annual revenue.
Yeah, my fear is, okay, is that, and the mayor's point is well taken for previous meetings, that the council is always free to either amend or to terminate this tax at some future date. At some future date, I don't know how many of us might be members of this council that would even recall that that option is available. So my fear is, is that we make this tax permanent at this point in time, there will not be an opportunity for this council to readdress based upon, okay, changes in the city's financial situation moving forward.
And I think that's a point very well taken. I think the council also has to realize, as tight as this budget is, we all know the state of the state, and being a businessman, we've absorbed that quarter percent. The taxpayers are used to it, we're used to taking it in. That quarter percent is huge. Four years down the road, I would love to say that we can reset that. The reality of the situation is, in today's economic climate, with the state of the state, probably not going to get a whole lot better in four years. I don't think in four years we're really going to be able to reset this sales tax. So I think we better be very cognizant of the fact that we need this money as working capital, we need this money to provide the services we're providing. And Alderman Randall's points, very, very well taken, but I'm also concerned that there might be some shortsightedness. We all know at this council, we know the parameters of the situation. I'm just concerned that down the road, I don't want to have a council that might be short-sighted and eliminate this, you know, in a tough financial situation.
I just want to reiterate what we talked about at finance meeting, just so everybody understands. If this extension would not pass tonight, this council, you all, would be forced to make some very, very significant cuts. And the only place that we can cut anymore would have to be in the central services of police and fire. This is 1.1 million, right Jamie? 1.1 million dollars in revenue, that quarter percent is. And as you've been made aware, it's been very tough with the money that has been reduced. The amount of income tax that we are down this past year, the amount of several of the taxes coming through and being passed through the state that are down. As I reported to you at the finance meeting, probably the only tax that we've seen any consistency or any slight increases has been sales tax. And that's remarkable. But everything else is down. Motor fuel's down, use tax is down, utility tax is down, income tax was down over a half million dollars the last fiscal year. And that's just because people are moving out of Illinois and our businesses are moving out. And it's just the formula that we get our share of throughout the whole state's income tax.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The other thing about it is too, if those two issues would have passed in that last election, and 1% sales tax on those two referendums, put it to 10%, that would have been an absolute killer. That would have been a killer, maybe would have raised funds for those particular entities. But for business and competition, you get up over 10% sales tax, and let me tell you what, all these people are coming in from outside of the area, they're going to question that. 8.25% is a very livable sales tax. It's not exorbitant, it's very much like with the surrounding communities, if not a little bit lower. I don't want to find us in a position four years from now where we're running charred money and all of a sudden we're having to say, wow, we gotta make this up, we gotta raise it another full 1% to 9.25 to cover our butts.
Exactly, exactly. Alderman, Elmore, you're done?
Well, we're not talking about not passing, if we're talking about the amendment is just to extend it, passing...
I understand that, let me just, I agree, you're right, it's about the extension of putting a four-year sunset.
Four-year sunset.
But I will say this, the only thing, and I don't have any proof of this tonight, and Jamie, I don't know if you can shed any light or not, I do, I think it's, and as I said, as Mr. Horner and I said, as many of you recently, we can reset the tax anytime, that's the power of the city council. But I want to do that with some planning of a budget and hopefully have some other things in mind. One of the things that kind of scares me to keep the sunset on there, it might be of some help to us when we're trying to make sure we keep our bond rating during this changing economy and the frustrations we're having from the state. I can't promise that would do it, but I think if we have it committed indefinitely, I think that might help us. Jamie?
I was actually just going to come up and hit on that same topic. We received notice today that we're having a bond rating review in two weeks. We were pulled randomly this year to have one. Honestly, with the year we had last year, I was kind of hoping and praying that wouldn't happen. Because what's going to happen is when they come in and see our audit from last year, the way that the finances were down, in all likelihood, they will downgrade our bond rating. I actually am pretty assured of that. While that doesn't impact us negatively too quickly, anytime we're looking to get more debt, it will become more sensitive, like your credit rating at home. One thing in talking with them today that they will look at is what we are doing to turn, kind of right the ship. One of the things that I discussed with them today was that this vote was coming up. They don't like sunset clauses, they think that that means that it will automatically go away in four years. So they don't give any sort of weight to the sales tax like they would if you abolish it, or if you say you're going to do it indefinitely. Now, that doesn't mean that you have to keep it forever, you can next month decide you want to do away with it after waiting until one of the deadlines from the state...
Twice a year, Richard.
...October 1st, change your sales tax rate up or down. But the credit rating agency will look more favorably on that you're just keeping it without a four-year deadline. That doesn't mean you can't. I'd rather have a four-year sunset clause than no sales tax whatsoever. I just wanted you guys to be aware of that in your decisions.
Thanks Jamie, and I was thinking along the same lines, and we haven't even talked to each other. I may have a couple of questions for you. Yeah, Jamie?
Jamie. When was the last review?
Typically, they, you always get a review whenever you're issuing bonds. So our last one was 2015. They are supposed to review you at least every two years, sometimes you don't know that they're doing that. When they do a random review like this, you have to have a long phone call and a long drawn-out process to kind of answer any of their questions.
So in 2015, when they reviewed us, did they downgrade our bonds?
No, we were sustained at a double A minus.
And at that time, we had a four-year sunset clause in place, correct?
Correct. But we had just lost a million dollars of revenue.
And we have reserves.
Yes.
Which is our scary part right now. Reserves are very much depleted after the state a couple of years ago holding our money, and now with the amount of state taxes that are down, you know, I think we've explained that, that's one of the reasons we took some of the actions we did in the last six months. Who with, Randall?
So Jamie, how much weight, if we do, if we keep or we don't keep the sunset date, they're reviewing this bond situation, how much weight does it really carry? Are they really looking at our financial position?
Right, they're going to look at your financial position, and they have a lot of points that they look at and they score. How they score each one of those, I don't know, I don't see that, that's their internal process. What they have told me, knowing what our bond advisor, Joy Howard, has told me, is it obviously is more favorable to them to say that you're making permanent changes to your situation. That doesn't mean that if we do this and say that it's indefinite, that they're not going to downgrade us. I have, that's not a guarantee, I'm not telling you guys tonight, if they get indefinite, they won't downgrade us. I don't know that, they probably...
Downgrading a bond would affect us somehow.
Like I said, not immediately, because all of our bonds are locked in at a current rate, but if we would go to finance anything after you're downgraded, it's just like your credit rating at home, the worse your credit rating is, the more interest you pay.
I would like firstly, I guess coming from this is one of you, I would like the council members to think about getting rid of the sunset date, but being very fiscally responsible over the next four years to make sure we can keep this 8.25 moving forward in the present financial conditions, but really work to keep this at 8.25 and be very fiscally responsible about any additional taxes.
Just for the record, we're at 8.1.
I'm sorry.
We already saved some money just now.
No, no, thank you, I don't say 8.1, I'm thinking of 0.25. I'm sorry. But I think we have to be very cognizant of the fact, moving forward, that this is a reasonable sales tax rate, probably one of the lowest in the area, very competitive. And if we're going to be competitive in the market, you know, we've got to, in the next two years before the next election, we've got to watch what we're doing.
I don't want anybody to think that we're the lowest, because we're not. But we're kind of in the middle to the 60% area, we're not the highest.
We're competitive.
But we're competitive. Now, in some areas, you know, we have a business district that puts us up, but that's not across the whole city. Rebby?
If we have a labor increase, which we are next year, 3%, and we go ahead and pay that and have no funds to operate, that means we're going to have to lay people off.
Or not rehire ones.
Or not rehire people.
And we can't afford to do that, we're already stretched at this point. We're down right now, folks. We're down several people right now that we're cautiously going very slow to rehire. We are down across the whole city, we're down 20 positions across the whole city. And I tell the staff every time we meet that we got to be very cautious and very frugal, because this month we have three payrolls. And I'll be honest with you, we're trying not to have to borrow or transfer any funds to make a month with three payrolls, that's very tight right now. So I will tell you honestly, Jamie and I worry more about money in the last, since May 1st, probably than we actually probably did during the recession. It's that tight right now. Alderman Randall?
Yes, Mayor, again, I'd like to reiterate that we're not talking about resetting the quarter percent sales tax here, we're talking about extending it for four years.
Kenny, I want to ask a question though.
Yes, ma'am.
If the state doesn't recognize the sunset clause, we have to be responsible as elected officials. So, and I understand what you're saying, that in four years, we don't know who's going to be here, but this is something that we should be looking at every six months. It shouldn't be four years down the line, it should be every six months. So to me, we need to revisit it every six months, that way it won't be forgotten about.
Well, we'll revisit it come December, January, when we start the budgeting process again. And that's when it gets revisited every year. And that's, you know, we always look at revenues and we talk with you very frankly, this was the first time in my 13 years as being mayor that we didn't hit our revenues probably in the 98 percentile. This year was the first time in all those years that, under my watch, that the revenues fell significantly sharp. And it's because of the situations out of our control. So I will just tell you, I would, personally, I would prefer that we continue to watch it regularly, we always have the ability to remove it, but I think with the bond rating in mind, right now, I would personally prefer if we just didn't have a sunset, but that's your call, that's your call. I'm not going to have a voice here unless it's eight to eight, or whatever we have here, nine, seven to seven. So, any other questions? Ed?
I personally would like to see the sunset, and just, if it does come up, I know that we're going to have a budget annually, and I know you guys talk about it, and I get that and I see that, but this alarm clock rings, here we are in September, now, we're talking about the sunset. Well, it should be that. It's something that's going to awaken us again, get into our minds, get everybody thinking like, what do we need to do? This is good conversation we're having, or is it...
It's a very good conversation.
And I think we need to do that every year, whether it be at lunchtime and or during the year, and the sunset, well, of course. You know, I wouldn't be opposed to having it every two years, but that's ridiculous and I don't say that. Four years, okay, I don't have a problem with that.
And thank you, Ed, that's pretty much where I was going, we'd better be cognizant to the taxpayers in our position.
Yeah.
Just that we, thank you, reevaluate this thing consistently.
Rebby?
If we lose our bond rating from triple A, regardless if it's minus, plus, or whatever, down to a B, you're going to see the ability to borrow from this city significantly get higher.
Yes.
And we're going to lose out. There's no doubt about it. It's going to come. They tell you that.
Okay, so we have, first to vote right now is on the amendment. The amendment is to bring into, I want to repeat what was said here, neither one of the motions is questioning whether or not to continue it, but the first amendment motion that we have to vote on, a yes vote will mean that we would include the sunset. Then we will come back and vote on the regular motion. So if there's no further discussion, roll call vote is to on the amendment. A yes vote means we will sunset it, a no vote means we would not sunset.
Consilla?
No.
Husa?
No.
Randall?
Yes.
Tyler?
No.
Anthony?
No.
Ovian?
No.
Schaefer?
No.
Dittelman?
Yes.
Gah?
No.
Steele?
No.
Wygant?
No.
Elmore?
Yes.
Wigginton?[1679.62]
That was made originally by, I believe, Alderman Consilla, and seconded by Alderman Shelley Schaefer. So if there's no further questions at this time, roll call.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dintelman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Motion carries. Did your voice go up because Garrett arrived? Okay, motion carries, that was, I want to repeat with Alderman, with Alderman, I think it was a very good discussion, and I respect all of your, you know, comments. We move on to the next one now, and Planning Commission, Alderman, Dillman?
On behalf of the Planning Commission, I'd like to make a motion to approve the sketch plan for Marcos Plaza, Glenwood Equities, for a point eight acre parcel located at the intersection of northeast corner of Sullivan Drive and Illinois Route 161. That's 2391 West State Route 161. Parcel 08-09-0-3-00-004, located in the C2 Heavy Commercial zoning district.
Is there a problem if we read them all together?
No.
Does anybody, would you want to read the rest of them in one motion? And Jenny's really glad you're reading them.
Eleven B two, motion to approve Glenwood Equity's plan for a point eight acre parcel located at the intersection of northeast corner of Sullivan Drive and Illinois Route 161. Twenty-three ninety-one West State Route 161. Parcel 08-09-0-3-00-004, located in the C2 Heavy Commercial zoning district. Eleven B three, motion to approve the site plan, land speed plan, and architecture elevation for Dollar General Glenwood Equities, for a point eight acre parcel located in the intersection of northeast corner of Sullivan Drive and Illinois Route 161. Twenty-three ninety-one West State Route 161. Parcel 08-09-0-3-00-004, located in the C2 Heavy Commercial zoning district, with the following stipulation. The use of the Dollar General structural materials are something similar to be used for the trash and trash.
Okay, and also the plans from August 8th, 2017, pieces of the city staff, right?
You have those in your packet.
That's taken care of, right, that's all we've been accomplished, okay? That's why you didn't read that. Okay, so we have a motion from Alderman, Dillman, did I hear the second?
Second.
By Alderman, Wiggington, any discussions? We're voting on eleven B one, eleven B two, and eleven B three, all coming from the Planning Commission. If there's no further questions, I call for the roll call.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dintelman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Those motions pass. Alderman Consilla, you've got two, you will take one at a time now.
Okay, Economic Development and Annexation Committee, I move that we approved the development agreement with Escape 618, the remodeling at 102 East Main Street.
We have a motion, do we hear a second, second by Alderman Pusa. I'd like to start off and acknowledge Mr. Schouster.
Thank you, there is, the item, item D, responsibilities of Escape 618, there was a question at the Economic Development meeting last week about the sales, after, we were able to finally connect today, those sales, they'll be entertainment related, so then we'll actually have to strike item D, so the sales will not be subject to sales tax, but there will be some that will be subject to, but not this amount, so. This amount here is going to be subject to no sales tax, we have to dedicate.
Everybody, that was a question raised, I didn't answer it, and we weren't able to have that exact answer that night, so. Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second about eleven C one. Any further questions or comments? Roll call.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dintelman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Consilla?
Make a motion to approve the development agreement with Sonoma Cap RE Fund III LLC for the redevelopment of 8512 West Main and 7,009 West Main.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Wiggington. Discussion on this motion, roll call.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dintelman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Motion carries. We move to Ordinance and Legal Review Committee, Alderman Wiggington.
On behalf of Ordinance and Legal Review Committee, I make a motion to revise Ordinance 8060-2017 residential refuge collection fee to reflect the specific language in regards to placing of residents.
So moved. Motion by Alderman Wiggington, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Gah, do I hear a discussion? Roll call.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dintelman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Motion carries. We go to Traffic Committee, Alderman Ovian.
Thank you, Your Honor, on behalf of the Traffic Committee, I make a motion to approve no parking signs on the east side of South 38th Street, approximately 186 feet from West Main, so moved.
Motion have second, second by Alderman Tyler. We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, and to approve this and have the proper ordinance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Administration, I'd ask for a motion to accept the PSC's proposal to remove and replace the fence along Richland Creek. Let me explain, well, if you make a motion, Alderman Steel, do I hear a second? Alderman Schaefer, explanation is here, it's probably pretty clear in your packet. But they don't want to damage the fence, they need to get over, this is the ride iron fence they put up at the police station. They will move it over at their expense, they will put it back, but all that remediation with Amarin and all that cold tar, they need, they need a few more feet of working room, so that's what this is about. So we have a motion, we have a second, there's no further questions, roll call.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dintelman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, I'd ask for a motion to approve, to enter into a memorandum of understanding with St. Clair County Sheriff's Department and the City of East St. Louis allowing for the burden grant 2017. Motion by Alderman Tyler, second by Alderman Dillman, is there any questions? Roll call.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dintelman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll tell you what, Mrs. Aiden Monarch, will you read it? You do it?
Yes.
Okay, I just feel a little awkward. Oh, I'm sorry?
Two that are being tabled.
Okay, first of all, yeah, well, let's get to, what's the other one?
Toby and Toby C, what has to be tabled.
Yes, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, first of all, why don't you start off with the first one, Communications, 12A.
12A, the best car show cruise, October 14th, 2017, request from Kenny Herzog to hold their annual car show on October 14th, 2017, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., location is 900 Shield Street.
Do I hear a motion for that approval? Well, we're going to, we're going to have, we're going to tell you about two that are being held here, then we'll read the rest of them, okay? Do you make a motion on that one?
Yes.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Elmore, to approve 12A. Is there a discussion on 12A? All in favor of approving 12A, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'd ask for a motion to table 12B and 12C. Motion by Consilla, second by Gah, and there, if you probably saw the email today, they're going to get together and talk. This was one I walked over at Main Street, but a number of those people did, they had Main Street, so then they're kind of out of the loop. So we have a motion, a second, to table 12B and 12C till October 2nd. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. If anybody doesn't object, can we go ahead and read the next three together? Okay, go ahead.
12D, Santa Parade, December 24th, oh, that's mistaken, that should be November. November 24th, 2017, request from the Optimist Club of Belleville to hold the annual Santa Parade on Friday, November 24th, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., with applicable street closures. 12E, Gingerbread 5K Run and Walk, December 2nd, 2017, request from Belleville Parks and Recreation Department, requesting to hold the 11th Annual Gingerbread 5K Run and Walk on Saturday, December 2nd, 2017, beginning at 5:10 West Main Street at 8:30 a.m., through a designated route and ending back at the Parks Department office. Also requesting barricades, police coverage, and temporary street closures until the completion of the 5K distance. 12F, Tavern Main, October 6th and October 7th, 2017, requesting to close Church Street from East Main to the alley during the Chili Cookoff Friday, October 6th, 2017, from 5:00 p.m. to midnight, and Saturday, October 7th, 2017, from 2:00 p.m. to midnight.
I hear a motion to approve these three communications, Alderman Pusa, second by Alderman Schaefer. Just to note on 12F, the Main Street's already closed all the way down to Charles on Chili Cookoff anyway, so it's not a, it's not like we're doing anything really drastic here with Tavern's request, it's half a block. So we have a motion, a second, to approve 12D, 12E, and 12F. Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor to approve these, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We turn the page. Petitions, we have none, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, Resolution 3312. Motion by Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Elmore, all in favor of reading by title only, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
14A, Resolution 3312, a resolution requesting permission from Ida to close Route 159 for the Santa Parade, November 24th, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to noon.
Motion to approve those resolutions, and a second by Alderman Schaefer. Any questions on Resolution 3312? Roll call.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dintelman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.[1521.53]